Welcome, everyone, to the September 19th, 2022 Regular Board of Aldermen Meeting. Would everybody please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Alderman Plufka?
Here.
Alderwoman Tice?
Here.
Alderwoman Sims?
Here.
Alderman Waggy?
Here.
Alderman Gould?
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Here.
Alderman Shelton?
Here.
All members are present.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval or amendment of the agenda. Do we have any modifications? Any objection to approving the same by acclamation? Seeing none, it will be so approved. Move on down to Item 4: Announcements, Appointments, Proclamations, and Recognitions. The first up is Presentation by Open Space Council. If you would, just come to the podium. Introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Alderman people. I'm David Wilson. I'm the President of the Board of the St. Louis Regional Open Space Council, and our organization was founded back in 1965, at a time when there was a lot of open space in St. Louis County. But as you all know, a lot of that has disappeared, and we're still focused on the mission of protecting open space and improving water quality wherever possible throughout the region. So tonight, we're here because we've been in partnership with your city government to acquire some land at Brentwood and Marshall, next to the metro station. And I'd like to introduce our Executive Director, Bonnie Harper, who is going to present a check to the city.
Thank you, David. Thank you to the city councilors here. So yes, we are very honored today to present the City of Brentwood with $50,000. And this is for the purchase of a remnant wetland, as David mentioned, in the city. And this is going to be in partnership with the City of Brentwood and the Deer Creek Watershed Alliance and the Missouri Department of Conservation and many other partners in the region. This is going to be kind of a new open spaceland within the City of Brentwood. It's going to protect Deer Creek itself and the floodplain of Deer Creek, and it's going to protect one of the last naturally occurring remnant wetlands in, you know, such an urban dense area within St. Louis County. So we're really, really proud to be a part of this project and to be able to help bring this to light and help the City of Brentwood acquire this really important piece of land for current and future generations to be able to utilize and enjoy and also protect, you know, the water quality of Deer Creek and really enhance some recreational and natural values within the City of Brentwood. So that's why we are involved. We're here as a partner on this project now and into the future. We look forward to further partnering with the city to help with restoration efforts on the wetland, to really restore some of the natural plants and plant life that, you know, had existed there and could exist again with just a little bit of love and care from residents. And so we will likely be partnering to, you know, bring up volunteers to do restoration work and help with maintenance of the site. Like I said, to make sure it's here for future generations to enjoy. That's really the purpose of, you know, why we're doing this work. I want to make sure that I give special recognition to the Robert J. Trulass Jr. Family Foundation. They're really what is making this donation possible from the Open Space Council to the City of Brentwood. So yeah, it's my pleasure to present this to the city. I think you guys are going to have a great piece of land for your residents to enjoy.
Next up, under Announcements, is Item B: Appointment of a New Brentwood School District Board Education Representative to the Brentwood Redevelopment Corporation. As you probably know, we have a vacancy on the redevelopment corp with the resignation of Keith Rabinberg, who served for many, many, many years, served the city. He served the city, obviously, and the school district as a member of the school board, but also served the city directly as a member of the redevelopment corporation. And we really do appreciate his years of service to the city. And with that, we have an opening. And this is the representative from the school district. I reached out to the board and asked for their recommendation, and they came up with Keith Slusser. And I think you probably, some of you may already know Keith, either as a resident of Ward 1 or a former resident of Ward 2. He was a former alderman, and he's also the treasurer for the Police and Firemen's Pension Fund and City Treasurer. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Keith Slusser.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Next up, we have a public hearing, and that is, well, I will gavel open, public hearing for the 2022 property tax rates. Anybody in the public care to speak to that issue and that issue alone? Now is the time to do so. Seeing none, we will gavel close the public hearing for the 2022 property tax rates. Moves us down to citizen comments. Now is the time of the meeting where if anybody in the audience cares to address the board, we ask that you come down to the podium, just state your name and your address, and you will be given up to three minutes. I do want to say one thing in advance of this. I would anticipate there are a few people here tonight to discuss the resolution, which is, sorry, what is it? And first of all, I want to thank the board for accepting my recommendation to hold off on voting on that resolution back in August, because in the interim, we have had an opportunity to have a number of ward meetings. The applicant also held an open house. We had an opportunity to educate a lot of folks, and I hope, one of the many takeaways that people had from those meetings is that tonight, all that's being voted on is approving the applicant as the preferred master developer. The board is not voting on any type of incentives, whether there will be incentives and if so, how much. That is not being decided tonight. What any type of, what the redevelopment area will look like is not being decided tonight. Again, it is simply appointing them, the applicant, as the preferred master developer, which would then open up a chance for the city and that developer to negotiate a redevelopment agreement. If a redevelopment agreement is ultimately reached between the parties, that agreement would come back to the board for a vote. And so feel free to come down and speak to anything, but I just wanted to let everybody know that in case you didn't already realize that. So with that, open up the public comment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Jamie Allen, Ward 1, 2204 St. Clair. I'm actually, go ahead, you, please.
And I'm Lindsay Spencer, Ward 2, 2509 Sicily Avenue, and we are with the Brentwood School District. I am the president of the Brentwood School District.
And we're actually here tonight on behalf of the Brentwood School District Board of Education, so not as individuals here, but representing the Brentwood Board of Education. So just a couple of points that we'd like to share with you all directly related to Resolution 1382. So we'll go through these. So number one, the Board of Education is in favor of redevelopment in general, and specifically the area of focus that's included in this development proposal, we are definitely in favor of that. General awareness, approximately 93% of our revenues actually come from local taxes. Those local taxes, that's a burden that we share as residents, but also can be shared in new construction. So for us, anytime new construction is introduced into the mix, there's a substantial benefit on the revenue side. And again, for us, we're not-for-profit, revenue is really about covering operating expenses, and as you all know, running this entity, operating expenses continue to grow. We need revenues to cover that. So first point in general, we are very supportive of redevelopment. Second thing, we do, as a district, have capacity to bring in additional students. Now, you'll see there's lots of different points of view around this. Mix of students does matter, right? If we have to bring in 150 kindergarten students, that's really going to change the profile of our school district, right? But if you look at that across K-12, pre-K-12, we absolutely have capacity. We're very appreciative of the investment that the taxpayers have made as you see the new construction going up. So the second point is, we're not overly concerned with having capacity. Our concern is having revenues to help us deliver services that we're expected to deliver. And those are in general. Specific to the Green Street proposal, a couple of things. Number one, as was mentioned by Mr. Mayor, we recognize that this is just a proposal. It's a starting point to open up negotiations. That's all that is, right? To the extent that the city, the Board of Aldermen, you all feel that Green Street is the right partner, we are very supportive, as the Board of Education, of you all entering into that agreement, because again, we recognize this is just a starting point. Second thing, the Board of Education, we typically operate on a five-to-10-year fiscal plan, and here's why this is relevant. There's lots of information that's been shared around what the years 10 through 25 look like. For us, we can't really be responsive for that, because it's a five-to-10-year plan, and quite honestly, you all know managing city financials, it's really five years that really, really matters to us. So as all of this information gets out in the public, our point of view is we're really concerned about the next five to 10 years, and that's where it becomes really relevant if you all decide to engage in interactions or negotiations with Green Street, that's where we would look forward to continuing conversations around that and the impacts, really, in the next five to 10 years. Lastly, just to summarize, as we actually encourage the City of Brentwood to engage in these negotiations with Green Street, we welcome the opportunity to be engaged throughout the process, and we look forward to seeing where this turns out.
Great. Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you all.
Anyone else care to address the board? Okay, we will move on to next item, which is Mayor and Aldermen Reports. First up is the mayor. I have just a few things. First, just a summary of our wonderful Brentwood Days event that took place this past weekend. Kudos to all the folks that were involved in putting on an absolutely spectacular event. It was the first time that we had a full-blown Brentwood Day since 2019, pre-COVID, and I think it went off without a hitch. The fact that food booths were running out of food, I think, is an indication of how popular that was. And so thank you to all those who did that, Eric and his staff. Thank you to all the staff that put together the parade, and so I thought it was fantastic. This Saturday, we have another recycling event, a quarterly recycling event, and the next week, I think upcoming, we have a Coffee with the Mayor on Thursday, I believe it is. So that is it for the mayor's report. Alderman Plufka?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the trustees of York Village and all who showed up for the September 13th Ward 1 meeting. We discussed many topics that night. It was well-attended, and your participation was very much appreciated. Thank you.
Alderwoman Tice?
I'll echo what Alderman Plufka just said.
Alderwoman Sims?
I also echo the sentiment, except it's specific to Ward 2. Thank you for everyone who came to our ward meeting. I think we covered a lot of ground that night, and I appreciate everyone taking the effort to make that attendance. Also, thank you to the City of Brentwood. We did have a wonderful time on Brentwood Days. I always enjoy pelting kids with candy, and in particular, I thank the Parks and Rec Department for, you know, being able to arrange such nice weather as well. That was much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Waggy?
Same, and no report after that. Thank you.
Alderman Lockmiller?
I too would like to thank staff for Brentwood Days. It was a beautiful layout down there. I somewhat knew how they had everything laid out. The fireworks was great. And then afterwards, you know, I stuck around when the lights came on, and it was the fire department, the police department, parks and rec cleaning up all together down there. So I thank you to the employees. Also like to thank everybody that came to our rather calm Ward 3 meeting. We got a lot of input, and I know Jeff will probably make a comment on it, but thanks for attending, and always welcome to any future ward meetings. Thank you.
Alderman Gould?
Sure. Thank you for joining. I also enjoyed Brentwood Days. I felt like it was, I had a lot of people talk about how, you know, last year, we had this smaller event that felt very community, felt like it was just the Brentwood community coming together, and this year felt exactly the same, with just more of the community, and it felt really nice, and I'm glad we could have it at least one last time there, potentially, and have the rides. Ward 3 meeting was fantastic. I do welcome everybody's comments, and I do want to make sure that everyone knows that you, all of your feedback and commentary has been heard and will be considered, continue to be considered. We normally would have had our meeting the last Tuesday of this month, so we're not going to have a meeting again on the 27th, and then it would, our next meeting is usually in two months. So we'll evaluate and then make some announcements on whether or not we're having more meetings coming forward.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes. I want to echo the thanks to the Public Works Department for putting up all of that new fencing, have it look shiny clean and take care of all the rubble. It's remarkable that so much was done in such a short time, so a lot of hours have gone into that, you can tell. Ward 4 doesn't have a separate meeting, but Alderman Shelton and I are at the Brentwood Forest Condo Association meeting on the last Tuesday of the month, and will be available there for questions if anyone wants to join us.
And Alderman Shelton?
I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. We have nothing under City Administrator Report. That brings us down to Item 9, the Consent Agenda, under which we have six items. Are there any questions about any of those items or any requests to remove any of the items? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and that brings us down to Item 10, Old Business Resolution Number 1382. Mr. City Attorney, do we need a reading of that? Nope, just a motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Can we get a motion to approve Resolution Number 1382?
Still moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Alderman Waggy?
Is it possible to ask a question of Green Street before we take the vote?
Sure, absolutely. That's why the-
I don't know if it'd be Joel or whoever, but so if you are approved as the master developer tonight, will you start engaging the businesses or will you wait until the negotiation is complete before you start talking to businesses down on Manchester?
That's a good question. We were actually going to talk to you all about that, depending on the outcome of this evening and kind of what the preference is. The most conservative approach would be to wait until we actually have a negotiated development agreement so that we know that there's a path forward. Really, the question there is, are we going to proactively reach out to current owners or not? Because anyone who has called us, we've happily had conversations with. We're just not kind of engaging people ourselves. So we're happy to discuss either. Normally, we would wait until the end, but I mean, we can have that conversation for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yeah, I just, I guess I'll put my head on the block first. I'm in favor of Green Street. The fact that they are a local developer and no one else came forward, and the fact that they will, while developing the property, they will also stick around to maintain it and hopefully become a good citizen of Brentwood, I'm in favor of Green Street.
Alderman Plufka?
I would echo the comments of Alderman Lockmiller, and I would say something else, too. Anybody who has witnessed the changes that have gone down in that stretch as a result of Brentwood-bound investment, the flood mitigation, the Department of Transportation's resurfacing of Manchester Road, the inclusion and creation of curbs where there have never been curbs along that section of Manchester Road ever in its history of that road, the introduction of a sidewalk on that south side of the street, the tunnel, pedestrian-friendly tunnel under Manchester Road connecting our trail system to the Great Rivers Greenway, the voting of a seven-plus-million-dollar playground, Destination Playground, a beautiful state-of-the-art event center just to the south of it, and a parking lot, and all of the work that's been done around there. No one can reasonably expect that redevelopment will not come to this stretch of Manchester Road. It is impossible to sit here and honestly think that things will go on as they have before, that those businesses and those buildings and the condition that they are in and the buildings in the condition that they are in will continue as before. It will not be true. And what we have to make a decision about and what's really about this decision is whether or not we can come to some agreement with regard to a comprehensive developer as opposed to some other comprehensive developer or waiting for piecemeal redevelopment of that area to take years and decades to accomplish. I am very much in favor of giving Green Street a try and seeing whether they can come up with a plan that is acceptable to us, given all the work that we have put in to making that area as beautiful as it is and helping it to reach an even higher potential. And the other reason why I like Green Street, and we've talked about this as a board, but I want to share it with the public, too, and that is that this company has done projects in other parts of the country. And in one place in particular, in north of Madison, they were involved in the redevelopment, have been involved with the redevelopment of a 40-to-50-acre plot of farm that has not seen redevelopment but has been aching for redevelopment for a long time. It's adjacent to an Air Force Base, and it is surrounded by neighborhoods that had differing opinions about what to be done with that land. And after they made a first proposal to the Madison City Council, and it was rejected, resoundingly rejected, they did not just walk away. They came back and they engaged groups within the public. They engaged a group that was basically really focused on keeping a portion of that land undeveloped. They were also dealing with noise issues and having to sift through all of the, what was good information, what was bad information. They came back six months later with a second proposal, which was also resoundingly rejected, and they did not give up. They came back and talked and engaged those constituencies to where they, in September, on the 6th of September, they made a third effort to try to put together a plan that would be acceptable to the City of Madison, and this time, it was overwhelmingly approved. I think that activity over that last year speaks volumes about this company, and I think it gives us a reasonable shot at trying to accomplish comprehensive redevelopment that can be acceptable to the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderwoman Tice?
So I have a question for Green Street, and it may be more fulfilled than for Joel, but I'll let you all decide. So we've spent a lot of time talking about the project and what's there, but you all are doing a lot of stuff, Boise, Idaho, Madison, all over St. Louis. So what assurance can you give us that you have the financials, both from banks and from private equity and private lenders, and then also, like, your staff? Like, we see you all, but like, are we going to get the A-team to help us do this if an agreement can be reached?
Sure. We're investing in cloning technology. So, no, that's a great question. I'm answering it instead of Phil, because all those folks report to me. So yes, it's a great question. I think we're extremely sensitive and intentional in the projects we choose to pursue. Top of your mind, I say way to so many more projects than I say, yes, I'll look at that. And there are projects like this that really have meaningful community impact, which is what we try to do, versus in other places where you spend 10 years just trying to assemble land to try to do something that's really impactful. So we're extremely intentional in how we do that. We've assembled, really, I would say, in my opinion, humble opinion, probably the best development team, I would say, in the region, if you look at the different skills that the folks in our team have. So that's really important. Secondly, we do strategically partner with people when it makes sense. So there are other developers that we work with, that we joint-partner with, if they have a skill set that we don't have as strong. You know, hotel development's a great example. We have a local partner that we partner with on our hotels, and that just kind of helps it go further, and then you do a really good job. And then the part that's really hard to understand, if you're not a practitioner in this, is the very, very long cyclical nature of real estate development. So the project we just wrapped up in Sheboygan, Wisconsin, for example, I worked on for four years, and that was to do three apartment buildings, right? But it's four years. So for us, what's very important and very critical all the time is to look at all of those projects that you noted and see where they are kind of in their lifecycle, because there's parts that are more time-consuming and less time-consuming. And we'd say that's the art and science of what we do is balancing that, because the biggest mistake we can make is to over-promise and underperform. You know, it's not really very impressive to have a big pipeline of work if you can't execute on it. So that's front of mind for everything we do, absolutely.
Thank you. And I'll just, I'll say that I also am in favor of this, looking and to work with Green Street on this proposal. I believe it answers something that the city's been looking for for many years, and I'm hopeful that with the significant investment that the city has made, that Alderman Plufka really referenced, that we can leverage that and remember that the city has made a significant investment as we, if we vote this forward.
Alderwoman Sims?
I also am in support of this resolution. I'm impressed by Green Street. I, just what I was able to learn and educate myself on the projects they have going. I think it's important to stress that we, as a city, in one form or another, you know, dialogued with at least 42 different developers, and Green Street was the company that was able to meaningfully respond to our request for proposal and who can holistically approach the redevelopment of that area. So I am looking forward to hopefully working with them and, you know, the people that voice concerns, either at the open house, our ward meetings, our prior Board of Aldermen meeting, I hope that you'll continue to engage us and be part of the conversation. We are hearing you, and, you know, we are at the starting point, so, you know, as we move forward. So I'm excited, and I look forward to the coming months.
Thank you. Alderman Shelton?
Yes. So I too am in support of this. For a little bit of background, I'm 20 years old, so I'm not your prototypical person who would be an alderman.
Twenty?
28. Sorry if I mumbled through. I wish I was 20. I feel 20. So, you know, the reason that I got involved in this is because, you know, I'm in the commercial real estate industry in a pseudo-silo, and, you know, I'm a diehard St. Louisan, grew up in Brentwood. I love this community. I feel like a lot of times that we get left behind, and we're looking back and saying what could have been. You know, I think you'll talk to anyone in the commercial real estate industry, they'll tell you Green Street is revamping St. Louis. They're the ones who are doing the impressive stuff, and this is their community. So I'm confident that we're going to be able to work with them, and as everyone's already mentioned, this is a starting point. We know our businesses have interest in staying. We know that there's some parcels in the proposal that maybe residents aren't looking for. You know, I made a point, because unfortunately Kathy and I don't get a lot of attendees at our ward meetings, but to go listen to the other ward meetings. So we are listening, and I encourage everyone to keep coming and continuing to talk with us, because we're listening to you. So thank you.
Alderman Gould?
Thank you. So I won't go over the exact same things that everybody else has said, but I do agree. I think, you know, the thing that struck me is that the city took on some bold visionary objectives that were a century-old problem with flooding. And in order to do that, you know, it took a lot of courage to do things the right way. And so I think that when we look at what was being done, has been done for the Brentwood-bound project, there's so many factors that would probably normally take a city 30, 40 years to actually do, and we have been able to really align, there are things that maybe were even out of our control that just perfectly aligned with MODOT coming through and wanting to repave Manchester Corridor. So, you know, we did that the right way. We could have, we could have, it wasn't the easy way, and it probably wasn't even the cheapest way, but we did it the right way to regain much-needed floodplain and a more natural flow to a watershed that is so critical to our region. And I feel like we have the opportunity now to sort of look at redevelopment and revitalization of such a critical part of our city and do it the right way. And what we've seen to date is a proposal. It's a starting point. I think from the decisions and the discussion that we have from here is not, shouldn't be focused on what we don't want to see all the time, but really focusing our efforts and our discussion on what we do want to see and what are the things that the community can come together on and agree that we would like to see happen. And I do have confidence in the fact that Green Street has, and other projects, shown that they listen to the community, they listen to the constituents, they listen to, and they make adjustments. I would like to ask Joel, if you would, give us a sense for, I mean, and that's a- that's been a critical part of our conversations, that, hey, this, a concept plan is just a concept. From here, we really work on the specifics, and maybe buildings aren't placed exactly where they are, maybe there's a different land use in certain places, maybe there's some buildings that exist, like you had said at one point, that you hadn't looked at yet that potentially could work within the development. So speak to us a little bit about your modification process from here, if you're chosen.
Yep, that's a great question. So I, I think I made a reference one other time that good real estate developers, I almost said just real estate, good real estate developers are good at following rules. It's an important part of what we do. There's, there's zoning rules, there's, you know, there's different regulations at local levels, state levels, federal, right? So when, when a city puts out an RFP, it's basically just a lot of rules. It says, please respond to this thing, make sure you follow the rules, right? Like, answer our questions, answer our questions in the way we asked you to answer them. And that's where a lot of people get jammed up, because they don't do that. They say, well, we're smarter than you, so we're going to tell, we're going to talk at you instead of talking with you. Our goal in what we presented was responsive to the RFP that was put out and to stay within the confines of what was asked of us. You have an incredibly good partner and consultant in PGAV, they do a phenomenally good job. And in the RFP, it had, you know, an idea of what, what the community wanted. Part of the problem is that plan was pre-COVID. The world has changed drastically for everybody. The built environment is no exception. It's changed dramatically. But we were, we were respectful to that process that was outlined, knowing that what we presented was not in collaboration directly with you, it was in collaboration with you via what you had done at PGAV and the community, right? So that's, that's a one-way information, right? Like, I couldn't modify my plan. If you notice, every meeting we've had, we're showing the same RFP response to show that it is static along the way, because it's really not fair, right? If I, if I show you one thing and now I'm showing you something different. So our goal would be, you know, get the development agreement negotiated, and then it's really engaging really with you all and with, you know, other stakeholders to say, okay, what makes sense where, what maybe makes sense to stay here? Maybe PGAV had something on their plan that really wasn't sensitive to a particular thing that could be preserved. And that's the collaborative process that, that you were alluding to, right? It's, it's working with you.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, and again, and I've said it to many others, I, I take you at your word because I think you've, and until we see otherwise, I think that's, that's where we are now. We start that, that pivot and shift. You know, I will say that the, there's a lot of discussion about, why don't we just kind of let things happen and see where, take it a little slower? And, you know, Wise Person told me recently, totally different context, but preparedness precedes possession. And, and I really do think that we are in a place now, maybe the economic environment's not great, and there's a lot of other factors that are not great to be starting to kind of look at this, but now's the time that you actually really focus in on, start to prepare for what you want to see for when things do kind of turn around. If you wait till things are perfectly aligned, then you probably missed it. So I think this is a critical point of, of preparation that we all still need to be bold about, and then hope that we can come to an agreement. Personally, I think for that area, parcel by parcel or, you know, bit by bit, is missing the opportunity to do what I think is most critical to, three things that are very critical to public interest. One is better traffic pattern and access management along Manchester Corridor. That's been an issue in, in that kind of depressed area of, of both figuratively and literally, but kind of goes down, and, and I think traffic has, has been an issue. So I think anything that we do that can relieve some of the congestion and traffic issues along that stretch of Manchester is going to be a, a public benefit and bring more opportunity for economic development for the, the retail and anybody who wants to even engage in that area. The second thing, I think that we need to make sure that we keep in critical focus moving forward is the very first thing that we chose to attempt to, to manage, which is stormwater management. And I think that allowing existing structures that are not built with best practices for stormwater management to just continue for indefinite period is not going to help us for, for that critical point of what we, we started. And, and so I, and then the last thing that I think is of public interest and was always clear from every single meeting that, from when I started to get involved in 2017 to 18 and throughout as a citizen, was we all wanted someplace, a sense of place that could bring the community together and make it walkable and, and less, you know, less dependent on the community to, to use vehicle traffic. And I think a, a bold proposal like we, we've seen can allow for that walkability to happen. And I think that's critical for, for our city. And like I said at the beginning, we have an opportunity to do something right, the right way, with respect to everybody who's there, the businesses, and, and, you know, we, we need to be able to proceed fairly, and, and I, I have confidence we can do that. And I think that if we do so, people will be able to look at this project, not only just in the region, but for the entire country and say, that's how you do it.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero.
Great. Thank you, Kelly. Brings us to the next item of business, new business, Bill number 6412. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a first read by title only, please?
Column 6412, first reading and ordinance amending Title III of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Brentwood, Missouri, and establishing revised no parking restrictions on the east side of High School Drive north of Manchester Road.
Thank you. Dan, are you presenting on this?
This is pretty straightforward. There's parking changes that are occurring as part of the MODOT project. So moving forward, the parking on the west side of Carls, it'd be the east side of High School Drive, that's going to be modified as part of this project. So I included a little map, kind of show you what's going on. So there'll be some angled parking. Right now, the prohibition is from Manchester Road up about 150 feet, and we're just extending it another 50 feet, so basically just beyond the first home north of Carls. So everything else stays the same, but on the east side of the northbound fork, that gets modified.
Do we have any questions for Dan on this? We would like to have a second read on this tonight, so can we get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill number 6412, please, by title only?
Bill number 6412, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance amending Title III of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Brentwood, Missouri, and establishing revised no parking restrictions on the east side of High School Drive north of Manchester Road.
Great. Chair, would you entertain a motion to perfect Bill number 6412 in the ordinance form?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Excuse me, Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, Bill number 6412 will become ordinance number 5043.
Thank you. This brings us to Bill number 6413. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill number 6413, first reading and ordinance approving utility easements with Union Electric Company doing business as Ameren Missouri for electric facilities in Brentwood Sports Complex on Russell Avenue.
Thank you. Dan?
This particular one, if you recall, there was a utility pole that would be adjacent to Field Number Three and the lumberyard. That was undermined whenever we had all the flooding, so this is an easement for Guy Wires and things of that nature for Ameren to put in a brand-new pole and get rid of the one that was damaged.
Any questions? We would like to get a second read on this as well. So.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that motion for a second read? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill 6413 by title only, please?
Okay. Bill number 6413, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance approving utility easements with Union Electric Company doing business as Ameren Missouri for electric facilities in Brentwood Sports Complex on Russell Avenue.
Great. Can we get a motion to perfect Bill number 6413 into ordinance form?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, Bill number 6412 will become ordinance number 5044.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a first read by title only of Bill number 6414, please?
Bill number, pardon me, we're just having our own conversation over here, enjoying ourselves, right? Bill number 6414, first reading and ordinance approving a physically disabled parking space at 2516 Melvin Avenue and installation of relating there to.
Thank you. Dan?
This particular resident asked us if we could put in some sort of ADA signage in the street. Right now, there's a single car driveway that's off-street parking, but the on-street is more level and it's easier to get a wheelchair in and out. So according to the city code, we have to have this before you two act before we can put up the sign.
Okay. Any questions? Alderman Plufka?
I don't have any questions.
You're going to make a motion for a second read? Because we would like to have a second read of this.
I would indeed make a motion for a second reading of 6414.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill 6414 by title only, please?
Bill number 6414, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance approving a physically disabled parking space at 2516 Melvin Avenue and installation of signs relating there to. We are interpolating the word signs into that title as opposed to amending it.
Alderman Gould?
I've just questioned, in the, in the finance operations, the 15,000 that you have towards street signs, that's, that's, that's the budget that we have, right?
The total, yeah.
But that's not what the cost is for one sign, right? Just wanted to make sure that people are clear that we're not spending 15,000 on a, on a sign. And do we have those signs already in stock or?
We do, yeah, the ADA ones, yeah.
I make a motion, we perfect Bill 6414 into ordinance form.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, Bill 6412 will become ordinance number 5045.
6414.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sorry. I missed it.
All right. Brings us down to item 11D, Bill number 6415. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill number 6415, first reading and ordinance approving a utility easement with the Metropolitan St. Louis Missouri District for the Brentwood Park Destination Playground Project.
All right. I don't see Eric. Bola, are you handling this?
I can. We are asking the Board of Aldermen for the approval of a utility easement that MSD needs. It is part of their MSD permit so that we can go forward with the Brentwood Destination Playground construction.
Thank you. Alderman Plufka?
I do have a question about this. Well, does this mean that, not necessarily this bill, but does this mean that that section of Pendleton will survive construction? It'll, it'll essentially dead-end into this playground area?
Playground area, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We would like, any other questions? Alderman Lockmiller?
I'll just make a motion to perfect.
Second.
Second read, I'm sorry.
Well, we need a motion for second read first.
Motion for second. I'll do that one then.
Second.
Were you testing me there?
Yeah.
I think I passed. All right. So we've got a motion and a second for a second read. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill 6415 by title only, please?
Bill number 6415, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance approving utility easement with the Metropolitan St. Louis Missouri District for the Brentwood Park Destination Playground Project.
Thank you. Alderman Lockmiller?
I think I'll make a motion to perfect.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All, okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, Bill 6415 will become ordinance 5046.
All right. We're moving on to item 11E, Bill number 6416. Can we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill number 6416, first reading and ordinance vacating a certain 25-foot-wide right-of-way owned by the city on Eager Road, which is no longer necessary for the purposes for which it was dedicated.
It's, that's exactly it.
I'm sorry. Is that, that's exactly what it is?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. All right. We would, any questions about this? Alderman Shelton?
Quick question, and Kevin, this might be for you, but does the entity which we're vacating to have any responsibility left to do? Or if we vacate this, it's just, that's, it is what it is?
Right. Once we, once we vacated, by operation of law, the, the, well, the underlying fee has
always resided with the, the adjacent owners.
Correct.
So once we vacate our interest, the rest of the title automatically passes to the successors to the original title that dedicated it.
Great.
So no action we have to take.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Plufka?
This is the dead end that, that, on the western end of Eager Road, that dead-ends into the eastern edge of York Village.
Correct.
Is that right? Okay. So am I sure I have the right section of Eager Road in mind here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Can we get a motion? We would like to have a second read on this tonight. Can we get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill number 6416 by title only, please?
Bill number 6416, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance vacating a certain 25-foot-wide right-of-way owned by the city on Eager Road, which is no longer necessary for the purposes for which it was dedicated.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill number 6416 into ordinance form.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, Bill 6416 will become ordinance 5047.
Thank you. Brings us down to 11F, Bill number 6417. Can we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill number 6417, second reading, first reading, let's start with the first one. First reading, an ordinance establishing the rate of property tax to be levied for the year 2022 for general municipal purposes, police and fire retirement fund, and public library purposes.
Any questions? Okay, we would like to have a second read on this tonight. Can we get a motion to that effect, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill 6417 by title only, please?
Bill number 6417, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance establishing the rate of property tax to be levied for the year 2022 for general municipal purposes, police and fire retirement fund, and public library purposes.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill number 6417 into ordinance form.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to point out, I mean, I know we point this out a lot, but it bears repeating at every opportunity. I know this bill is entitled Tax Rates and Revenues for the General Fund, but if you'll notice, and I want people to notice, that the rate for the general fund is 0.0. There are no taxes being gathered for the benefit of the general fund from property taxes levied in the city of Brentwood.
We are one of the few municipalities, correct?
I think we are one of the very few, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We did get a motion to perfect on it. Anything else? If not, then roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, Bill number 6417 will become ordinance 5048.
Thank you. Finally, the last item under new business is Resolution Number 1399.1. Is someone presenting on this or not?
Major McIntyre?
Major? We have some changes, is that right? No? Okay.
So just the fact that this particular agreement triggers a Calea standard, our credit and body, and so we just had to make that compliant with those particular, with that credit and body, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, do we have any questions for the major on this? Bola, you wanted to say something?
Yes, just real briefly. So the county would prefer that we use specific language in their contract, so they basically rejected the contract that the city sent them. In addition, city's labor council wants us to point out to the Board of Aldermen that there is a cap on the compensation that St. Louis County will cover. Anything beyond that would be the responsibility of the city. We've determined that that will not be the case for a couple of years. Also, there is a cap on overtime at $15,000, and given the average overtime hours that the incumbent has accumulated over the years, we don't believe that he will have up to 200 hours in overtime. So we're addressing some of the concerns that were brought up. The last is regarding tort. The county says that if there is claims or injury happening on their facility, they will be responsible for it, but if there is injury happening to the officer, the city will be responsible for it. So we just wanted to outline all of that in here for the board.
Alderman Plufka?
So that raises the question that I had, or at least one of the questions I had, was knowing something about workers' compensation law, I don't really understand how you can detach somebody, put them under the direct control of another entity, and still say that injuries that occur in the course and scope of employment and arising out of the employment somehow go back to the quote-unquote sort of general contractor where they came from. I don't really understand how that's possible. I don't think it is the way the law was written, and I know it's not the way that I've been practicing for 33 years. So I don't really understand that response by the county. The other one I would question is, so the 200 hours amounts to the 15,000, is that what you were?
No, it's less than 200.
Okay.
It's, I think, more like maybe 40.
So that was my, so that was my concern. It wasn't so much that we'd hit the cap of the 100,000.
Right.
But that we might exceed the cap of the 15,000 in overtime.
Right.
And do we have any, I mean, from looking at past experience, do we have any experience that says, yeah, it happened three times, or it happened 10 times, or it happened?
No. So I talked to the HR manager, and he says that this particular employee has never reached that cap, but hopefully the county will know that they should not assign overtime that would allow him to reach that cap.
Does this, does that cap on the 15,000 and his salary, does that change Officer Lang's willingness or desire to want to do this?
Not at all, and if I could just add a little bit more substance to your question.
Sure.
So I spoke with the director, spoken to him almost every day. I spoke to him this morning and asked that question again. The director is a former municipal instructor at the academy, and he said, in his 20 years, he has never seen anyone exceed, even come close to exceeding the cap. He said Corporal Lang will have some initial overtime where he's sent to Jeff City for some instructor development training. He said after that, it's eight to four, Monday through Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can we get a motion to approve, can we get a motion to approve Resolution 1399.1?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion on that resolution? Alderwoman Tice?
So if we're, I'm going back to the question that Alderman Plufka asked, are we going with what the county said on the legal responsibility? Is that still, or are we still working that out? What are we voting on?
I can say one thing to that, if you don't mind. It doesn't matter what the contract says. The workers' compensation statute is what it is, and no matter how they try to contract around it, what I described is the relationship. Anybody, if he suffers an injury and he's under the control of St. Louis County as an instructor, no matter where he is, that's his employer. And it doesn't matter what they wrote in the contract. It really doesn't. In my opinion.
Anybody else?
You're the worst compensation.
I mean, I, absolutely, I will absolutely defend.
I guess I'll defer to your expertise on that, but I just think, like, don't we want to have the contract cleaned up and, I mean, or is it, I think, is our legal counsel confident that we're appropriately covering our employee here with?
That's why we wrote the contract the way we did.
That's right.
If you want the county to sign the contract, you'll have to sign it this way.
Okay.
What we call a deal breaker.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call, please, Kelly.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero.
Great, thank you, everybody. That brings us to the final item, citizen comments. This is the second time of the Board of Aldermen meeting when the public has an opportunity to address the board. Once again, if you care to do so, just come up to the podium, please, state your name and your address, and you'll be given up to three minutes. For the people who have never done this before, just keep in mind that this is not a two-way conversation, this is simply an opportunity for you to make a comment, and if the board cares to say something in response, they will have the freedom to do so.
Did I state my name and address?
If you would, please.
Ryan Marshall, 2810 Landell Drive. Well, I meant to get this in in the earlier comment section. I'm dealing with a newborn at the house, so I'm sure most of you can appreciate some of the difficulties that go along with that, but, you know, just wanted to say, my, you know, my wife and I are both third-generation Brentwood residents, you know, born and raised here. She went to McGrath, I went to the good elementary school. Both attended Brentwood Middle and High School. You know, I left for a short period of time to go to college, but found my way back here. We lived in Brentwood Forest together for a while and have since bought a house on Landell down by Brentwood Park. So, you know, I hope all of you don't spend too much time on the community Facebook page,